All right, welcome. Yes, we have two recognitions tonight from the Virginia School Boards Association. The first is for Mr. Nicholas Benton. The V S B A has submitted his name to the Virginia School Boards Association to be included in the annual media honor roll, and they wish to thank him personally for his approach to sharing with the community both the challenges facing our schools and the successes achieved by teachers and students. His work has aided in focusing our goals and providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. I also have with me a commendation certificate, and Mr. Benton, if you don't mind coming up here, we will give this to you and get a quick picture. Can you, how do you cover the news that you're part of here?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Interesting, interesting journalistic question. Yes, and so here is the Virginia School Boards Association. Yeah. Just want to be near a mic.
Describe your experience.
So, this is the Virginia School Boards Association. The honor roll is for your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. Your work has educated, your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. So, thank you, and let me come down and get a quick picture.
Thank you very much.
I will, I will add.
Okay, thank you.
You all want to show a picture?
All right, thanks.
All right, next here, and you talk to the Falls Church Times. Would you mind coming up at, like, you know?
I'll just read into the, to the record here. Again, we have a certificate for the media honor roll recognizing Stephen Siegel of the Falls Church Times. School Board recognizes your fair and balanced reporting on school division and education-related topics. Your work has educated, your work has aided this community in focusing on the goal of providing the best public schools we can for the children who attend them. So, thank you, and let me come down and get a quick picture.
Thank you very much.
We could, they'd be fine. There's really nothing on you.
And then, could you two come up for a quick picture?
We'll get one with the entire board, please. Just get a nice, come on. We're not, we don't, we don't burn up film anymore, so. Just, just a few electrons. Come on, Mr. Benton, let's get you up here with us.
Oh, thank you. You're so nice. You're tall. Don't want to hide your belly?
My heels are shorter than yours today.
You just want me to hide that gap?
Exactly.
That's what I was doing.
Hold up our documents?
Sure.
Why not?
Nice touch.
Who?
Is that what it is?
Thank you. All right, thank you again, gentlemen.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
He goes up the coast, east coast. He goes up the coast?
Where, where it's warm this time of year. All right, next, we come to public comments and requests. And before we have that, I would just like to make a brief comment to the public. Last week, we had public comment session that was slated to come after the closed session, and while we noticed that there would be about an hour interval during closed session before public comment, we did not do a good job of adhering to that. Historically, this has not been an issue. Last week, it was, and I would just say that the day after, we received some input from the community, some very polite, some not so. But however it was expressed, it was, it was legitimate, and we have taken steps to fix that so that going forward, we don't have a repeat of that, because I am sensitive to the fact that people have other things to do, and to come in to make public comment is sometimes a burden, and we should be respectful of that. So, starting this week, we have made steps to do a better job of that, and again, my apologies to the community for the inconvenience that we caused last week. With that, we will now move to public comments and requests, subject 3 dot 0 1. In accordance with School Board Bylaws 2 dot 3 0, the time for each speaker is limited to three minutes. Additional written statements may be submitted to the clerk for dissemination to the board members and for the record. I come now to the list of speaker requests, and we have Bronwyn Rankin. Good evening, welcome. Yes, please come up and turn on your mic, please, and thank you for coming out tonight.
Already on. Okay, we're good.
There you go.
My name is Bronwyn Rankin. I made a statement at last night's Special Education Advisory Committee of concerns that leadership on SPIAC have, has negatively affected our special education department and in turn, our children. The leadership has disrespected, has been disrespectful and uncollaborative with school staff and intimidated members of the committee to agree with its views. They do not work within the bounds of their roles as committee leaders. I base this information on my own experience of the leadership in a meeting last year, as well as expressions of distress from trusted members of the community with firsthand experience of SPIAC. Since my statement yesterday, I have received an unsolicited email from a close supporter of the chair to gain information about me to discredit my comments. I have no professional affiliation with the schools as a psychologist, and I make my statements as a parent of a special needs child. Today, the chair named me on Falls Church News Press comments to discredit my public I believe that the committee chair should listen to feedback. I have a right to make public comment without punishment from the chair and her associates. At last night's SPIAC meeting, the chair refused to second in motion for a vote on her resignation. Five committee members cited difficulties in the leadership and climate of meetings making it hard to move forward as a productive group. The chair did not invite the Director of Special Education to participate in generating ideas for SPIAC goals, even though one committee member asked the chair twice to allow the director's input. This lack of communication with key staff limits the committee's knowledge of what is happening in the schools. I asked the board to help make this a functional committee of collaboration with members and staff, objective, respectful considerations of all views, and good boundaries in the role of the committee to make positive change for our special needs children.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment this evening? All right, Ms. Gadel, do we have any other?
Yes, we have five. We had the first from Johanna Berry, sent a letter into the school board requesting that the school board consider, consider an amended meeting model in the future to hold closed sessions after, toward the end of the meeting. Ms. Sajilia Ramsey wrote that she had waited more than two hours to deliver just a short statement during her public, for public comment. Mr. Reitinger wrote, saying that he, regarding the number of closed meetings being held and the practices with which they are held. Ms. Ramsey again wrote, the reason she was there for that evening was to talk about problems and conflict in the school district and how we are addressing them. And Ms. Rankin wrote about her concerns with the recent special education leadership, and that's all.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gadel. The other thing I would just say in passing is that we have had some discussion recently of civility in how we express comments and disagreements, and with respect to the closed meeting, I received sentiments on, that were aligned with respect to substance and which were vastly difference, different in terms of how they were expressed. I would say that it is possible to offer criticism and to express disagreement without getting vituperative or angry. At the end of last week's forum, I was, it was suggested to me that I would be better off dead, and then I don't think those are really constructive statements that we need or want in our discourse. So, with respect to some of the public comment that we've received in the past, I would respectfully ask that, I think we can elevate our level of discourse and have a substantive discussion without getting personal or angry or violent, and frankly, the tone of some of this is, is getting to the point where people are, are becoming fearful, and there is intimidation, and we have to take steps, rather extraordinary steps, I think, for security measures, and I don't think that's what Falls Church is about. So, I would ask everyone in the community to take a deep breath and to endeavor to be a little more respectful going forward, and I'm optimistic that we'll be able to do that. With that, we will go now to item four, the closed meeting. Would someone move us into closed meeting, please?
Mr. Chairman, before we do that, I, I just wanted to double check based on our experience of last week, to see what you anticipate being the length of this closed session and whether or not we should move it to the end of the meeting, or if we should have it closed for items on the consent agenda now and do the other later. I just want to be sure that we're doing the right thing.
All right. My estimate is that this, well, I was talking with my father earlier today, and he was reminding me how bad lawyers are at estimating the duration of things. My guess is that this would be approximately one hour. Dr. Jones and Mr. Horn, I don't know if you would offer your own opinions, but I think an hour is probably what we would budget.
You would not exceed that.
It would not exceed that. All right. So, budgeting that, I would-
I think on the consent agenda, unless any of the school board members have questions, it's very minimal. We probably don't need a closed on the consent, unless somebody has a question.
We could move to the end, then.
Okay. So, I would entertain a motion, then?
To adopt the agenda.
Okay, well, okay, all right.
So, I guess, so, so I would move that the school board revise its agenda to move the closed meeting to the end of the meeting this evening. I guess that also means that I'm moving that we adopt the agenda as I suggested we change it at this point.
Right. I think we'll, we need to tweak the revised agenda a little so that we do have that alignment. This, this is a bit of a work in progress as we revise our agenda to be more respectful of the open, of the comment session, so that would be a motion to amend the, to adopt the amended agenda as, as proposed. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Any abstentions? All right. So, we will then move the closed meeting to the end of the agenda, and it will now become item, should become item-
Eleven.
Eleven, yes, okay. Very well, then. No, I think, I think with, on the consent agenda, unless anybody has any questions, we can proceed with that. Are there any questions with respect to the consent agenda?
It doesn't really need to be. It's a closed session item because it's personnel?
Yeah.
Unless somebody has a question. We did have an item two and an item three, but I don't think that the school board will have any questions about either one of those.
Mr. Sharp, if you would like to-
I'm, I'm not suggesting that there's a substantive issue here, but there is a sequence that's, I think, appropriate, and I would just suggest that observing the sequence is, is, is a good thing to do.
Ms. Carney.
Why don't we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? If the motion does pass, then we can take the consent agenda up after our closed session.
All right. I would seek unanimous consent to adopt the consent agenda. Seeing no objection, that is so ordered. So, we come now to item seven on our agenda, and that is the approval of the V R S hybrid resolution. We discussed this briefly last week, had some questions, and I think Mr. Ankuma suggested that we defer that until this evening, and so we now find ourselves with this item here. Dr. Jones?
And I'm actually going to defer to Mr. Ankuma. He was working as late as today with Mr. Kimball while he was away on vacation to make sure that he fully understood, I believe, this item, and so he may be more eloquent than I would be.
Okay. I had a few comments, and I did speak with Hunter Kimball this afternoon. What I wanted to find out was the rationale for why we were looking, why, why it would be necessary to, to set up yet another retirement slash pension plan. My understanding of the way things stand is that we have, there's a V R S system that's mandatory. Then there's a V R S contributory I C M A R C plan where there's a mandatory 1% by the employees and a match of 1% by the, by the employer, and then there's the, the hybrid plan which constitutes a 4, 4 0 1 A portion and a 4 5 7 hybrid. And then, in addition to that, we also have an employer which is a school-sponsored 4 3 B plan with a whole variety of options. I, I guess my question to Hunter this afternoon, and he had the, he had the provider for Valic, send me the 4 3 B options. My initial question to him was, why are we doing this? Could it be because we do not have enough investment options for the contribute, for the voluntary portion of the contributions? And on examining the, the different options that were there, I believe there are probably close to 70 to 80 different investment options ranging from the very conservative to the very aggressive. So, begs the question for me as to why we'd want to set up, what would technically constitute a fourth bucket for retirement? And so, in my mind, if I had to vote, I would say we vote not to adopt that. It would just be creating additional work, and I think there are enough investment vehicles or retirement buckets that we could put in without adding additional cost and unnecessary burden. Whatever that plan that they're proposing, we already have, in my opinion. So, that would be my two cents here.
So, so in other words, you, you agree with the, with the memo and the guidance that we've been-
That the superintendent and assistant are providing that we do not adopt this plan.
Okay. Any, any other questions for Mr. Ankuma, he having had some, the most recent discussions with Mr. Kimball? Seeing none, would, would anybody care to propose a motion, then?
Lisa, Ms. I-
Oh, excuse me, Ms. Hi.
I just had one thing. I spoke with Amanda Blanchard last week. I know that at the last meeting, Mr. Sharp was asking how peak would weigh in. Spoke to Amanda, and she said F C E A agrees with what the proposal from Mr. Kimball would be as to not switch from I C M A.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just-
Sir.
Addition, Ms. Blanchard and I also at least asked the question whether a legislative change here might be in order. She was going to check on whether, at the, the state employee level, whether they were interested in seeking a legislative change so that the existing 4 0 3 B plan could be the place where the employee would choose to make such a voluntary contribution rather than setting up an entirely separate 4 0 3 B plan, and so that, that's still in the works.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Anything else? Would anyone care to make a motion, then, on this?
Mr. Chairman, would the school board adopt the resolution 07-50 not to allow eligible employees to direct hybrid voluntary contributions to an employee-sponsored hybrid 4 0 3 B retirement plan?
Second. Thank you, Mr. Sharp and Mr. Ankuma. All in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed? Any abstentions? Very well, thank you. Item 7 dot 0 2, construction update, Dr. Jones.
Yeah, I don't have a lot to add this week, mainly that we are still working in preparation for the hearing, which is coming up on us very quickly. I do want to add, not necessarily that it is construction, but future is in looking at the G M M E H project, and we've done a lot of work over the last two weeks of outreach to staff and also to the community with our School of the Future event last Saturday. We've had great feedback from that. We're collating all of that information right now. I think Mary Beth actually took it home tonight, so we are working to put that together. And that was a great event, and then we also have had a lot of outreach with our staff members, sitting down with every department, because, you know, what a math teacher wants and what a science teacher wants, they're different environments, and so I think probably the, the fun for me has been just to see how progressive our teachers really are, and they're in a really old building, and, you know, credit to the entire staff, because I had shared with, I think it was Mr. Castillo and, and Mr. Sharp today, that I was talking to a superintendent at the VAS conference yesterday, and they have probably one of the, I'm going to say just the coolest high school buildings, very new, very innovative, lots of flexible space, and he said to me, he said, you know, it is an awesome building, but don't come when the kids are in there. I said, well, why? And he said, because our staff was not prepared for the building. And so, you have a traditional staff trying to teach in an innovative space, and the reality is it has to be the other way around. And I really do believe that by the time we get Arnie High School, our staff are really progressive. When we sat down with them and they were looking at walls that roll up to open up a space or to have different spaces and flexible spaces, they were really excited about the possibilities, and they all talked about how they could see their teaching just continuing to be enhanced by what a building would actually allow them to do, because when they do small groups now, you'll see a lot of kids just out in the hall, you'll see them in the alcove. They don't really have breakout spaces, and they don't really have the collaborative spaces. So, we've had some great meetings. We are, Dorian, I know, was working on it today, was on an email exchange where next round is with the students, and he and Mr. Burdo are organizing that, and we'll be sitting down and getting all of their input about, because they are high school students, what they think a high school should look like. So, lots of community outreach right now. We'll continue with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions?
Just a quick, and maybe not too quick, comment. I, I want to thank Dr. Jones, too, for really extraordinary measures during, I would say, the last year and a half of going to many different sources and allowing the, the board to participate in, in viewing many of these different projects, all the way from Ballou High School, which was just a shell that we were looking at, Dunbar High School, a finished product, and Wakefield High School, Bishop O'Connell, and I guess most recently, the two buildings in Alexandria, the Minnie Howard Ninth Grade Center and then the, the Polk Elementary. And those, those last two were very, I, I'd say very much in, in line with what was being discussed at the visioning this past Saturday, the energy-saving concepts that we heard about on, on the panel. Several of them are already implemented at the schools in Alexandria, and, and some of them retrofitted onto old buildings. And then, I guess with the one, one concept that I don't think we explored Saturday was, was modular types of construction. I wonder, Dr. Jones, if you have a comment on, on what we were able to see at the Polk Elementary in Alexandria, was, I know was pretty brief, but perhaps you have a, an assessment of the modular concept?
And I think Alexandria did a great job with the modular concept, and when you're inside the building, you, it just feels like a regular classroom, and I, you know, and I think going forward, it obviously will just depend on what sort of building, you know, we're creating. I will say one interesting thing is that, and again, rather than this changes within the next 12, 24 months because of technology, is that I did some more checking when I came back, and the sort of multi-story we're talking about where our community was comfortable, four to six, would not be recommended. And again, that's, you know, just a very low level, asking the right questions to some people, but certainly, I think that's something in the future for us to consider and think about.
Can I, can I clarify there?
Please.
The folks who suggested that it was not so, so desirable, was this the, the engineering folks that we encountered on that day or, or different folks?
No, I went to our team of people that, our collective team right now that we're working with, and just asked that question. Again, I think it would need a lot more research, you know, based off what, what kind of project we were really looking at. So, that's, but I was very impressed with what Alexandria has done, and I think, and I agree with you, Mr. Sharp, too, that just looking at the sustainability issues and what they had done in those two buildings was really great.
I just mentioned that the, the site that we saw, I believe it was only a three-story construction of modular, so, so just, you know, three units stacked on top of each other. And then the, the gymnasium was modular, so that was just a one, one-story unit, but it was three stories high, I would say. And I guess the, the, the main advantage I sort of saw from, or one of the main advantages of doing it that way would be a limit on the disruption to the educational process that would be taking place prior to the movement of these modular units onto the site. In other words, you wouldn't have to have construction going on, on the site, you would have it going on elsewhere, and these units would be trucked into the site and set up on a very, you know, very short time period, and rather than have the, the site tied up with construction for, for a long period, the, the modular units would, would sort of, would, would overcome that problem of having, having the site in, in a potentially, well, in, in a situation where you'd have to take, take strong precautions to make sure that safety was maintained during the construction period.
All right, well, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other questions for Dr. Jones? All right, sir.
I'll just add that at the debate today, some students were allowed to ask questions, and a lot of them were wondering about where will students be during the construction, so if that's something that could get clarified to them. I'm sure it depends a lot on the actual project, but just a general idea.
Okay, and, and obviously, the staging process is, has to have continuity to allow the construction and yet at the same time, continue to educate the students, and so we will, we will definitely communicate that. I would also thank you for conveying those comments and would urge you that as, as people have other questions, as students, I think there was a lot of interest in today's forum, and tell your, your peers and your classmates to please, you know, raise questions, and you can convey them to us or they can just send something straight to us, because we're happy to hear from them, and the more input we can get, the better.
And I might add, Dorian, when we have the meetings with the students, that's a great opportunity, because I know Bob Jones will be there, who is our construction management person, and he can give- strong precautions to make sure that safety was maintained during the construction period.
All right. Well, thank you, Mr. Sharp. Any other questions for Dr. Jones? All right. Sir?
I'll just add that at the debate today, some students were allowed to ask questions. And a lot of them were wondering about where will students be during the construction? So if that's something that could get clarified to them. I, I'm sure it depends a lot on the actual project, but just a general idea.
Okay. And, and, and obviously, the staging process is, has to have continuity to allow the construction and yet, at the same time, continue to educate the students. And so we will, we will definitely communicate that. I, I would also thank you for conveying those comments and would urge you that as, as people have other questions, as students, I, I think there was a lot of interest in today's forum. And tell your, your peers and your classmates to please, you know, raise questions. And you can convey them to us, or they can just send something straight to us, because we're, we're happy to hear from them. And the more input we can get, the better.
And I might add, Dorian, when we have the meetings with the students, that's a great opportunity, because I know Bob Jones will be there, who is our construction management person. And he can give lots of different examples of how staging works in high schools and has a lot of experience with that.
One last question, Dr. Jones. There, there was some mention at the, at the visioning, and I think after that as well, should there be other ways of getting input from faculty and staff, such as surveys or other sort of structured inputs? And I was wondering what your thoughts are about that.
And we did have the online survey from Saturday, just in general, you know, out to the community, and we'll continue to do those. I will say, had we sent a survey out to the staff, they would not have been able to really give us the same feedback they could. Because after we met with them, it helped them understand what a 21st century building could be. And they're already teaching that way, but we literally laid out pictures of buildings from around the nation, around the country that were progressive. And they started just picking up pictures like, oh, my gosh, this is really cool. And I, we had a conversation, actually, with, when the math team was in there, I think it was the math team. And there are several of those teachers that have never taught anywhere but George Mason. And they're amazing teachers. But they hadn't even really thought that a building could look different, because we have such an old box-driven building. So I think now, once we do another round like this, then we could start surveying and even, you know, digging deeper, because they're starting to really think about what it could be. So...
So, so you are contemplating that that will, that will come down there?
And honestly, with all of our ASACs, if you look back at TJ and Thackeray, Task One, Task Two, even on Mount Daniel, we use surveying a lot. Everything down to surveying the whole staff, what color things are going to be. So that's kind of the way, I always feel like if we can get staff buy-in from the people that are going to use the spaces, then they enjoy the building. Because there's nothing worse than opening a building and have people say, ooh, I don't like this. So that's the way we've operated with all of our facilities, and we will continue on this project, too.
Thank you. Other questions? All right. We will move now to board and student liaison comments. Mr. Sharp and you, why don't you kick things off for us, please?
All right. I was glad to see a few students at the student table on the, during the visioning session on Saturday. Unfortunately, some of them had extra credit opportu, came for credit in their government classes. But regardless, they contributed to the discussion, and any of their input is valuable. A lot of focus was placed on what Dr. Jones was talking about, about breakout spaces, that, that students needed places to meet during free time, for, for club activities, for group projects, any of those things. I'd also inform you that I am starting a column on Lasso. One of my objectives is to sort of bring the school board to the student, to, well, to have communication go both ways. So I'll pick out some issues once in a while and provide context so that the students are aware of what's going on, on the school board, and aware of issues that might affect them in the future. And lastly, I'd like to thank Dr. Jones and Mr. Bird and the build, the team of, of, I don't know, the builders, the architects, for organizing this with the students. I think it'll provide everyone with valuable input. So thank you.
Thank you very much. Why don't we start from right to left tonight, Mr. Sharp?
Well, once again, the, the visioning was very, very well done. The panel was very informative. I do think there was limited time and, and a very large subject to try to deal with. And so I, I do think there's value in having some additional work toward other aspects of what we will need to evaluate and, and recommend by, by the time we have, you know, detailed recommendations going out. One of the, the points, I think, even of, of sustainability, which I think was the main, the main focus of Saturday's session, was stormwater. And that, that was something that really was not, was not covered. And so it's, it's an important type of aspect of sustainability, one on which the rules have, have been evolving and have become quite a bit tighter just recently. And so I, I would suggest that on that aspect, and, and perhaps several others, we, we, we could, it would be valuable to have additional, additional look at how we should evaluate projects as they come in, and how we should request them to be further developed in detail. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sharp. Mr. Webb?
Thank you. I attended the elementary school PTA meeting on Sunday evening. They are working on some different grant proposals, and they had an art submission. But my time with them, it was spent mostly talking about and answering questions on Mount Daniel, just giving them an update that we're working diligently on getting, being prepared for the November 4th meeting. And we will keep them in the loop if, if anything came to fruition of, of changing that project, so that they can be informed as we move forward with that. And the daycare advisory committee met on yesterday, and my portion of that before, having to, to leave out what's, again, answering questions about Mount Daniel, having some questions about that. And generally, same, same kind of thing, keeping them informed. And as we move forward with that project, that we will keep them in the loop. And our plan is to go forward on November 4th, and working diligently and hard to, to get that project passed. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Webb. Just for the record, the date for the planning commission hearing is the 5th?
Fourth.
Fourth or fifth?
Fourth.
It is the fourth?
Fourth, yeah.
It is the fourth, all right. Just wanted to make sure. I'd seen, I'd seen two numbers bouncing around out there, and I wanted to just be clear about that. All right, Ms. Carney?
Yeah, one of them was for me, and it was my late night typo, so I apologize for getting you off track about that. I would say, with regard to the session on Saturday, to the community, if you were not able to attend the session, the panel at the beginning of the session was recorded, and it'll be posted on YouTube. And I encourage you to go and take a look and to listen to that. And then if you have feedback or ideas about priorities or just about anything, please send those to us. In addition, if you'd like to be in the loop about the report and what comes after, please feel free to send your email to anybody on the board with your request, or to Mary Beth Conley or the superintendent, and we'll get you on that list. And so you can keep up to date with what happens with the information that we gleaned at the session. I do want to shout out to Mary Beth Conley, because I know it took a lot of effort on her part to arrange that, and it was professionally done. It was just terrific. I was very, very happy with how that turned out. And I think the people I talked to who attended were happy as well.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence.
Couple things. First, the visioning was fantastic on Saturday. And I think my favorite part was when the, the part came where we passed out the blocks. While the, everything was being explained, there was one woman very diligently making a little castle with a bridge and another building. And she was all done by the time, you know, the instructions were done. It was a, hardly a school, but it was a lot of fun. Last night, I missed the Fall Search Education Foundation meeting, because I had to go to the, the special ed meeting. But at the foundation, they passed their super grants. They have $57,000 in super grants this year, which is, is kind of amazing. They're, they're doing a great job of spending their money. On special ed, I'll just make some brief comments. We did have security officers there, because we had members of the committee who had personally asked for security, because they were very concerned. We had problems with following procedures. We had a motion and a second that was, for something that was non-binding. And yet, that was ruled out of order by the chair and the vice chair. We had five members of the committee expressing extreme unhappiness with the leadership. One said that the school board at this point should probably just blow the committee up and start over, which was rather sad, since he's the longest-serving member. The, they refused to, the, the leadership refused to even consider having our civility code on their agenda for a discussion item, which we had asked that everybody on every advisory committee be asked to sign, just like we are not required, just asked. And they would not do that either. So we have five out of 10 who are clearly unhappy. And out of the eight members who are returning from last year, we have five out of eight who are unhappy. So we need to discuss this more. But last night was, was not a happy meeting at all. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Ankuma?
Yes, since our, since our last, well, before the last meeting, we've had a, a full schedule. I've attended the full, the education, sorry, the chamber commerce and board meeting last Tuesday, discussed the whole range of issues around the city. But I attended the mini-golf fun night the other Thursday, which was rather successful. I think Mr. Sharp was there. Lots of folks around the city, the kids were there as usual. So it was a fun night. Went to the GT board meeting a couple of weeks ago, the GT advisory committee. They're still working on, I, I guess the goal this year is to try to sort of fine-tune their, their definition, or put the whole gifted and talented thing into context, and also work with, trying to find, having defined it, try to, you know, figure out the best resource allocation to meet those needs. So that's the goal this year. They'll meet three additional times, but at least they'll try to work on coming up with a, a sort of an outline of the focusing on who is gifted and talented, and how best we can help, help them. I was at the PEAK meeting today. A whole variety of issues came up, including tuition waivers at UVA, Virginia Tech. It talked about security and teacher responsibility for security, including volunteer lists and how to match them with parents. And other guests coming in, we talked about intraschool communications and teachers not initially, but that was more of a technical glitch that I believe had happened, where teachers were unable to call other teachers, especially where you have middle school and high school, sort of having students go back and forth. So that was interesting. That was pretty good. And, and they talked about the, the superintendent was there to, to help the, the teachers understand what their roles will be with the, was it, the, the start times for the schools and all of that. So good, good discussion. And I think some of the newer members of the committee have been brought on board. And then finally, us two of you would attest to, we were at the George Mason High School PTA sponsored forum for the candidates. And that was run with military precision, if I can put it that way. Went well, and I, and I believe our, at least our, our candidates, both up here and those in the stands, did themselves a, a lot of good. So we'll see what happens on November 3rd? Yes, okay.
That was it.
Thank you, Mr. Ankuma. Ms. Ward?
Yeah, I, I just wanted to mention that on the recent appointment of Susan Thackeray to our ASOL committee, we now almost have a complete advisory board. We are still looking for one more volunteer to join our ASOL advisory board. As far as the athletic boosters, nothing really reported there. I just want to mention that our fall sports are winding down. There are a few home games left. And you should all try and get out and see a volleyball or field hockey or football game, if you can do it. I think they're the only games that are, that are still home games for the rest of the season.
Thank you. I just have a couple of things. First of all, the visioning was a great success. There was a great turnout, a lot of participation and enthusiasm. There has been some question from the community about the comment period, the comment machine. The link remains open and active, so if you have comments to submit, please, by all means, do so. It's not going to close immediately, but sooner would be better than later. Volleyball is, I don't know how the varsity did, but Mr. Ankuma and I watched the JV do a fine job against Strasburg this evening. It was a great game. Give a heads-up to the community, watch your inboxes. We are preparing a survey to send out to the community to get a sense of issues that are on the community's mind, priorities for the budget. So we are looking for as much participation and input as possible. So watch and please respond. It's a valuable source of information. We need that kind of input, and, and so as much participation as possible there will be great. And then there have been a couple of meetings from time to time, talking about issues relevant to the community. Ms. Ankuma referenced one. I would like to commend the Lasso today for the candidate forum that they convened. They did a great job. It was, it was very well done, very well attended, very well executed. And I was very proud of, of everybody and their performance there. I was also very thankful that today was a bright sunny day. Because if it had been raining, we might have had a bucket on the stage to, to catch some of the dripping water. So, so thanks again to the, to the Lasso for a great event, and to the students for showing up, and to the teachers and the staff at George Mason, and the leadership for all they do to create an engaged and informed future electorate, and sometimes current electorate. So with that, now we come to, on the revised agenda, the closed meeting portion. And would somebody like to move us into closed?
Mr. Chairman, in pursuit of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, I move that the board convene a closed meeting for the following purpose, to discuss or consider the identified subject matter. Personnel under Section 2.2-3711A1, in particular, an EPPED assignment and an advisory committee appointment, not sure we really need that at this point, and legal matters under Sections 2.2-371187, in particular, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by the public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel.
Second. Thank you very much. Ms. Goodell, would you call the role, please?
Mr. Ankuma?
Yes.
Hi.
Ms. Carney?
Yep.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Yes.
All right. Thank you very much. We now, having come back from closed, we need to certify our closed meeting. Somebody want to certify our closed meeting?
Mr. Chairman?
Whereas the Falls Church City Public School has convened a closed meeting on the date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote, and in accordance with the provisions of Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and whereas Section 2.2-3711B of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now is therefore be resolved that the Falls Church Public School Board hereby certifies that, to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only business, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirement by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which the certification applies, and two, only such public business matters, as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting, were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you.
I'm so sorry.
I'm filling in, I'm filling in.
The role, role of clerk will be played by Dr. Tony Jones.
Some morning, you can go home. Mr. Ankuma?
Aye.
Mr. Castillo?
Yes.
Ms. Carney?
Yes.
Mr. Lawrence?
Yes.
Mr. Sharp?
Yes.
Ms. Ward?
Mr. Webb?
Yes.
All right. Next on our agenda is the approval of minutes for October, no, we have no.
I think we have any.
All right. We have materials for board review, and we have to adjourn.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We did it in under two minutes. And I thank you all, and I wish you all a good evening. Thank you.